Study at the house of abundance, San Antonio, Texas. Let us pray. Our dear heavenly father, we thank you for all the lessons you have taught us so far from the story of Joseph. We believe you still have more lessons for us to learn as we study tonight about his rise to power in Egypt. Father, open our eyes and our hearts and draw us to a deeper understanding of your word. Holy Spirit expound your word in our hearts. We pray in Jesus' name, amen. Today we are studying Genesis forty and forty-one, verses one to thirty-six. Genesis forty and forty-one, one to thirty-six. Joseph in prison and Pharaoh's dreams. Last week, we saw how Joseph landed in prison for an offense he did not commit. Instead of being rewarded for his steadfastness and faithfulness, Potiphar put him in prison because of the false accusations leveled against him by his adulterous wife. But Joseph did not go alone. The omnipresent God went with him. No wonder in chapter thirty-nine, we have the sentence, "The Lord was with him," repeated several times. Even though Joseph was in prison, he continued to experience the mercy and the favor of God. He soon became responsible for everything and every prisoner who was in the prison with him. Little did he know that God was using his difficulties to build his character and prepare him for the future. God provided him meaningful work, even in prison. Now let's read chapter forty, verses one to eight. It came to pass after these things that the butler and the baker of the king of Egypt offended their lord, the king of Egypt. And Pharaoh was angry with his two officers, the chief butler and the chief baker. So he put them in custody in the house of the captain of the guard in the prison, the place where Joseph was confined. And the captain of the guard charged Joseph with them, and he served them. And they were in custody for a while. Then the butler and the baker of the king of Egypt, who were confined in prison, had a dream, both of them, each man's dream in one night, and each man's dream with its own interpretation. Joseph came into them in the morning and looked at them and saw that they were sad. So he asked Pharaoh's officers, who were with him in the custody of the lost house, saying, "Why do you look so sad today?" And they said to him, "We each have had a dream, and there is no interpreter of it." So Joseph said to them, "Do not interpretations belong to God? Tell them to me, please." Let's stop there for a while. Two of the most highly placed and most trusted officials in Pharaoh's palace, the butler, who was the chief cupbearer, and the baker, offended the king. He was angry with them and put them in prison in the same place where Joseph was. We're not told the nature of their offense, but most probably it has something to do with the work they did. The chief baker was in charge of Pharaoh's food, while the chief butler tasted his food and drink to make sure that there was no poison in them before giving them to the king. Were they suspected of conspiring against the king? We don't know. Anyway, they were in the prison, and Joseph was assigned to serve them. After the man had been, the men had been in custody for some time, they dreamt the same night. Each one of them had his own dream, and both of them were worried. In the morning when Joseph went to them, he noticed their sad countenance. "Why do you look so sad today?" he asked them. They replied, "We each had a dream, and there is no one to interpret it to us." Even though Joseph had his own problems and difficulties, he was still able to observe other people's worries and care about them. He has sympathy and compassion for them. Experiencing hardships should not stop us from observing and sympathizing with others who may be going through difficult times. Philippians two four, Philippians two four says, "Let each of you look out not only for his own interest, but also for the interests of others." Listen to Joseph's answer to these men. Do not interpretations belong to God? In an environment where many false gods are worshipped, Joseph was not ashamed to testify about the one true and living God. He boldly declared that interpreting dreams belongs to God, not to the gods. He did not focus the attention on himself to make himself look good. Instead, he focused the attention on the one true God, his own God. Whenever the opportunity arises, we must have the courage to speak about our God as Joseph did. "Tell me the dreams," Joseph said to them. Now let's read verses nine to twenty-two, excuse me. Chapter forty, verse nine. Then the chief baker told his dream to Joseph and said to him, "Behold, in my dream a vine was before me, and in the vine were three branches. It was as tall, it budded. It blossoms, its blossoms shot forth, and its clusters brought forth ripe grapes. And Pharaoh's cup was in my hand, and I took the grapes and pressed them into Pharaoh's cup and placed the cup in Pharaoh's hand." And Joseph said to him, this is the interpretation of it. The three branches are three days. Now within three days, Pharaoh will lift up your head and restore you to your place. And you will put Pharaoh's cup in his hand according to the former manner when you were his butler. But remember me when it is well with you. Make mention of me to Pharaoh and get me out of this house; for indeed I was stolen away from the land of the Hebrews, and also I have done nothing here that they should put me into the dungeon." When the chief baker saw that the interpretation was good, he said to Joseph, "I also was in my dream, and there were three white baskets on my head. In the uppermost basket were all kinds of baked foods for Pharaoh, and the birds ate them out of the basket on my head." So Joseph answered and said, "This is the interpretation of it." The three baskets are three days. Within three days, Pharaoh will lift off your head from you and hang you on a tree, and the birds will eat your flesh from you. Now it came to pass on the third day, which was Pharaoh's birthday, that he made a feast for all his servants, and he lifted up the head of the chief butler and of the chief baker among his servants. Then he restored the chief butler to his butlership again, and he placed the cup in Pharaoh's hand. But he hanged the chief baker, as Joseph had interpreted to them. Yet the chief butler did not remember Joseph, but forgot him. Excuse me. Both the chief butler and the chief baker told Joseph their dreams. The chief butler saw a vine with three branches. It budded and blossomed and brought forth clusters of ripe grapes. He squeezed the juice of the grapes into Pharaoh's cup, which was in his hand, and placed the cup in Pharaoh's hand. Joseph's interpretation. The three branches are three days. Within three days, Pharaoh will take you out of prison and restore you to your position as his chief cupbearer. After interpreting the chief cupbearer's dream, Joseph made a request of him. Remember me when it is well for you. Show me kindness. Make mention of me to Pharaoh and get me out of this place. For indeed I was stolen away from the hand of the, land of the Hebrews, and also I have done nothing here that they should put me into the dungeon. Joseph had two good reasons for seeking his release. He was an innocent victim. First, his brother sold him into slavery. And even though he was serving his master Potiphar diligently and faithfully, he was framed by Potiphar's wife and unjustly imprisoned. By asking the chief cupbearer to mention him to Pharaoh, Joseph was hoping that his case might be reviewed and he might be delivered from false imprisonment. When the chief baker saw that the interpretation of the chief cupbearer was full good, he also told Joseph his own dream. "I also was in my dream, and there were three baskets on my head. In the uppermost basket were all kinds of baked goods for Pharaoh, and the birds ate them out of the basket on my head." Joseph's interpretation of the baker's dream was bad news. The three baskets are three days. Three days from now, Pharaoh will cut off your head and hang you on a tree, and the birds will come and eat your flesh. Even though the interpretation of the baker's dream was bad news, Joseph was bold and faithful to give the terrible interpretation. He was God's faithful messenger to both of them. Three days later, Pharaoh celebrated his birthday. He made a feast for all his servants. The chief butler and the chief baker were brought forth from the prison. He restored the chief butler to his position again, but he hanged the chief baker. Everything happened just as Joseph had said. But the chief butler did not remember Joseph. He completely forgot about him. Joseph never had another opportunity to be freed until after two full years. Yet, his faith was deep. He just kept on performing his tasks diligently and trusting God. It was patient endurance on his part. As believers, we too are called to live a life of patient endurance, no matter what we may be going through. No wonder Paul's prayer for us is, "May the Lord direct your hearts into the love of God and the patience of Christ." May the Lord direct your hearts into the love of God and the patience of Christ. Second Thessalonians three five, second Thessalonians three five. We need to wait patiently for the purpose of God to take its course. Joseph was forgotten by a man who should have remembered him, a man for whom he had gone done something good. Sometimes the good we do may go unrewarded. Naturally, Joseph would have been disappointed and discouraged. But God had not forgotten him. God's presence never left him. In fact, I believe God was going to use those two more years that Joseph had to wait in the prison to further develop his character and skills and prepare him for the great task he had ahead of him, that of saving lives. Now let's read chapter forty-one. We're going to read the first sixteen verses. For, for Genesis forty-one, the first sixteen verses. Then it came to pass at the end of two full years that Pharaoh had a dream. And behold, he stood by the river. Suddenly there came up out of the river seven cows, fine-looking and fat, and they fed in the meadow. Then behold, seven other cows came up after them out of the river, ugly and gaunt, and stood by the other, by the river, by the other cows on the bank of the river. And the ugly and gaunt cows ate up these fine, seven good, fine-looking and fat cows. So Pharaoh awoke. He slept and dreamt a certain time. And suddenly seven, seven heads of grain came up on one stalk, plump and good. Then behold, seven thin heads, blighted by the east wind, sprang up after them, and the seven thin heads devoured the seven plump and full heads. So Pharaoh awoke, and indeed it was a dream. Now it came to pass in the morning that his spirit was troubled, and he sent and called for all the magicians of Egypt and all its wise men. And Pharaoh told them his dreams, but there was no one who could interpret them for Pharaoh. Then the chief butler spoke to Pharaoh, saying, "I remember my faults this day." When Pharaoh was angry with his servants and put me in custody in the house of the captain of the guard, both me and the chief baker, we each had a dream in one night. He and I. Each of us dreamed according to the interpretation of his own dream. Now there was a young Hebrew man with us there, a servant of the captain of the guard. And we told him, and he interpreted our dreams for us. To each man he interpreted according to his own dream. And it came to pass, just as he interpreted for us. So it happened. He restored me to my office, and he hanged him. Then Pharaoh sent and called Joseph, and they brought him quickly out of the dungeon. And he shaved, changed his clothes, and came to Pharaoh. And Pharaoh said to Joseph, "I have had a dream, and there is no one who can interpret it. But I have heard it said of you that you can interpret, understand a dream to interpret it." So Joseph answered Pharaoh, saying, "It is not in me. God will give Pharaoh an answer of peace." In this chapter, we see Joseph's day of triumph. It is true that weeping may endure for a night, but joy comes in the morning. Psalm thirty, verse five. Your painful circumstances do not define your ultimate destiny. Here, the God who saw Joseph's pain in slavery and in prison intervened. Pharaoh had two almost identical dreams in one night. In the morning, he became very concerned about what the dreams could mean. So he sent for his magicians and wise men to come and interpret the troubling dreams. But none of them could interpret them. It was at this time that God caused the chief butler to remember Joseph. "I remember my faults today," he said. He then explained how, when he and the chief baker were put in prison by Pharaoh, each of them had a dream in one night. And it was a young Hebrew prisoner that interpreted their dreams, and things turned out exactly as he had interpreted them. He had forgotten Joseph, but God had not. God was just about to unfold his good plans for him. That is why he was at the right place at the right time. Pharaoh sent them to bring Joseph. They brought him out quickly. He shaved and changed his clothing and came and stood before Pharaoh. The time was ripe. Pharaoh said to Joseph, "I have heard that you can understand a dream to interpret it." Joseph answered Pharaoh, saying, "It is not in me. God will give Pharaoh an answer of peace." In the last chapter, that is chapter forty, verse eight, Genesis forty, verse eight, Joseph had told the chief butler and the chief baker that interpretation belonged to God. Here, he's also giving the credit to God, not to himself. Even though he was in the palace of Pharaoh, the king of Egypt, where many false gods are worshipped, he praised the all-powerful God, the one and only true and living God. Many times we give credit to ourselves or to other people instead of giving it to God who makes all things happen. But he alone deserves all the glory. In Isaiah forty-two, verse eight, Isaiah forty-two, verse eight, God says, "I am the Lord; that is my name, and my glory I will not give to anyone else." We must never take credit for what only God can do. Now let's read verses seventeen to thirty-six of chapter forty-one. Then Pharaoh said to Joseph, "Behold, in my dream I stood on the bank of the river. Suddenly seven cows came up out of the river, fine-looking and fat, and they fed in the meadow. Then behold, seven other cows came up after them, poor and very ugly and gaunt, such ugliness as I've never seen in the land of Egypt. And the gaunt and ugly cows ate up the first seven fat cows. When they had eaten them up, no one would have known that they had eaten them, for they were just as ugly as at the beginning. So I awoke. Also, I saw in my dream, and suddenly seven heads came up on one stalk, full and good. Then behold, seven heads, withered, thin, and blighted by the east wind, sprang up after them, and the thin heads devoured the seven good heads. So I told this to the magicians, and there was no one who could explain it to me." Then Joseph said to Pharaoh, "The dreams of Pharaoh are one. God has shown Pharaoh what he is about to do. The seven good cows are seven years, and the seven good heads are seven years. The dreams are one. And the seven thin and ugly cows we came up after them are seven years. And the seven empty heads blighted by the east wind are seven years of famine. This is the thing we shall have spoken to Pharaoh. God has shown Pharaoh what he is about to do. Indeed, seven years of great plenty will come throughout all the land of Egypt. But after them, seven years of famine will arise, and all the plenty will be forgotten in the land of Egypt, and the famine will deplete the land. So the plenty will not be known in the land because of the famine following, for it will be very severe. And the dream was repeated to Pharaoh twice, because the thing is established by God, and God will shortly bring it to pass. Now therefore, let Pharaoh select a discerning and wise man and set him over the land of Egypt. Let Pharaoh do this, and let him appoint officers over the land to collect one-fifth of the produce of the land of Egypt in the seven plentiful years. And let them gather all the food of those good years that are coming and starve grain under the authority of Pharaoh, and let them keep food in the cities. Then that food shall be, that food shall be as a reserve for the land. For the seven years of famine, we shall be in the land of Egypt, that the land may not perish during the famine." Pharaoh's dreams. One, as he stood by the river, seven fat, healthy-looking cows came out of the river and were grazing along the bank. Soon after this, seven other cows, thin and ugly, came out of the same river, and the thin and ugly cows ate up the seven healthy-looking and fat cows. The second dream. Seven plump and well-formed heads of grain on one stalk were devoured by seven thin heads of grain withered by the east wind. Joseph's interpretation. The seven fat cows and the seven healthy-looking heads of grain represent seven years of bumper harvest. The seven thin cows and the seven withered heads of grain represent seven years of severe famine. represent seven years of severe famine. After the seven years of bumper harvest would come seven years of severe famine. The famine will be so severe that people will forget their several previous years of abundance. The same message was repeated to show Pharaoh that the events were certain. They had been established by God and will surely come to pass. But Joseph did not just stop with interpreting the dreams. He went further to counsel Pharaoh what to do about it. The interpretation will no doubt present a great problem for the king and the people. But Joseph went on to provide a solution to the problems. And the solution that he gave was not just his own suggestion. It was obvious even to Pharaoh that the wisdom he exhibited was God-given. The spirit of God was at work. God spontaneously gave David a complete plan to prepare the nation for the time of emergency. In verses thirty-three to thirty-six, we have Joseph's advice. Now therefore, let Pharaoh select a discerning and white man, a wise man, and set him over the land of Egypt. He further advised that the king should appoint officers who would go round to collect twenty percent of the produce during the seven bountiful years and store up the grain with the authority of Pharaoh, so that they would be a reserve for the land for the several years of famine which Egypt would experience. We shall complete this chapter, chapter forty-one, next time. This is where we'll stop today. Let us pray. Father, thank you for our study of tonight. When we go through hardships and suffering without any seemingly just cause, when it appears that we are forgotten in our predicament and can't understand why, help us to have the right attitude through suffering, knowing that you, our loving God, are always at work beyond what we can see and understand. Give us the grace to endure patiently as we wait for you to accomplish your plans and purposes for our lives. We give you praise, Father. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Join us next time when we shall complete chapter forty-one and go on to chapter forty-two. Good night.